This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is the Bussar City Council Special Health and Safety Committee Meeting for Tuesday, April 28th. It's 6:01 PM, and I'll call the meeting to order. Members present are Bruce Kukka, James May, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Item one, the Special Health and Safety Committee Meeting was called by members James May, Mark McKeever, and Kevin Myers for the limited purpose of discussing EMS and COVID-19 safety services. So, one of the things that we've done is when we talked in the ad hoc committee last week, started the ball rolling on the COVID-19 thing. And so what I've done is break this down into your packets as just a list of information that we can go through and discuss. If at any time you have any questions or any input, just feel free to chime in. The first item I wanted to discuss was a USDA grant that's available that Acting Chief Schwimley has made us aware of. And I'm looking at the data here, and one of the things he was not sure of was if they would go off of the last census numbers or go off of our projected next census numbers, since their definition of large and small city is 12,000, and we're teetering on one side or the other of that. With that information, if, and he figured this on a $200,000 ambulance purchase, if we are ruled to be over 12,000, the USDA would pay 70,000, and we would pay 130,000. If they deemed us to be under 12,000, it would be a 50-50 split. We would pay 100,000, and they would pay 100,000. Either way, the USDA would finance our portion for the length of term to be whatever we decided the useful lifespan of that ambulance would be. And so on the second... No, it's not in here, but I did do some figures whether we did it over five, six, or seven years, and it's somewhere between 15,000 and 18,000 per year would be our cost. And you don't pay the first payment until the following year. This grant does not have a deadline, so it's not near as time-sensitive. This is according to Acting Chief Schwimley as an open grant. However, he did say that that extra money that they're giving to the cities under 12,000 is a new thing, and he doesn't know how long it'll last. So I just wanted to put that out there. When you look at the benefit during the COVID times, as it was mentioned the other night in the ad hoc committee, should we transport a suspected infectious patient? Could take upwards of 90 minutes to the only ambulance we have. That's a 2010 model with 74,000 miles that we got off a gov deal. It's in great shape. We got very lucky finding a used ambulance that was in such good shape that somebody was getting rid of. The CDC guidelines say you should air it out for 30 minutes, both pre and post-decon, and then about a half an hour to decon. That's where he came up with a 90-minute timeframe. Having a second ambulance during this time could prove beneficial in our response to a pandemic situation. If we only have one vehicle, it could be taken out of service for decon for that 90 minutes and longer if the crews are tied up on other calls. So that's really the only benefit during the COVID time. The ongoing benefit is that we've been having the ongoing discussions about what to do with the ambulance district. Looking at the probability of us leaving the ambulance district and doing our own, we know that we're going to need at some point to have two ambulances of good quality. And the fact that this is out there to get a grant, like I said, this one is not of a time-sensitive nature. So, again, just to talk about the information, my opinion is, is, you know, we've discussed it with the administration and the fire department. I think the administration wants to hold off due to financial uncertainty, but the part that I had learned about it was that we wouldn't be doing anything until next year's budget with payment was the point I wanted to make on it. Joyce, do you have any input that you want to give to that?
Well, next year's budget may not be, it may be worse than this year's budget was, because it's going to take us a long time to recoup the lost withholding and some of the net profit monies. If they get an extension past July 15th, they could take us into the beginning of next year. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I really don't. We're looking at, you know, saving as much as we can this year and looking at a lot of options, but I don't know that we can jump into something like this right now.
Okay. Mark, Bruce, or Jim, any comments or questions on this one?
Clarify, your chart here that you have showing on your second page, the year one, two, three, and four, can you go through that and explain that to everybody so we're on the same page?
Yeah, that's on the next grant that I want to talk about. It's where it really comes into play. Do you want me to hop into that now, or do you want me to wait and see if there's any other questions on this first one first?
Whichever the other two prefer, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Bruce, I see you're talking, but you're muted.
Oh, I had no comment about the USDA. That's what we were talking about. So now, if, as far as getting the ambulances, you can do them and still get the money at a later date than having to worry about them right now. So other than that, I have no comment about that.
Okay.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
I mean, right now, I understand the ambulance thing here, but right now, we don't run the squad there. So, I mean, if our ambulance went down for some reason, we're really not the main source of the runs.
You are correct. One of the things, though, is that, you know, if Portsmouth isn't fully staffed, which at some days they haven't been, they have been putting us on standby and having them do more, having us do more runs than in the past. And if for some reason, and again, we're talking about the impact on the COVID situation, you know, if they get hit hard where they're not going to have as much staff showing up to work, thinking more about what our response that would be, I guess, is what I'm getting at, if that makes sense.
Right.
But you are correct.
I also seen on, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago with a, I think it was down in Columbus or somewhere around there, that their fire department came up with a way of decontaminating their ambulances and fire trucks. They came up with their own spray gun, the paint, and they sprayed down their vehicles, waited 10 minutes, and wiped them down. So there is other things out there to speed up and decontamination on those vehicles, something to check into.
Yeah, and that's something we need to look at. I know the information I'm using came from the CDC, but I'm sure there's a bunch of different ways to do it.
All right, okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So, to go back to what Mark's question was, I'll hit on topic number two here, which is the Safer Grant. We used the Safer Grant back in 2013 for three firefighters. What the Safer Grant is, is the federal government, it's a grant that they would supply for any new firefighters we had hired, they would pay 75% of the costs for the first one and two years. And on the third year, they pay 35% of that cost. On year four, we're on our own. So, the benefit during the COVID time really would be little to none, because this program starts in July. New hires would need to be on staff within 180 days of the start of the program. So maybe if this second or third wave of the pandemic hit us, it might help us, but I don't see any real benefit for the COVID situation. For the ongoing benefit, again, as we've discussed, the probability of leaving the ambulance district, we know that we need to increase staffing at the fire department to handle EMS. We've been currently, we're in the middle of having a study completed by William Kramer, who's the former Fire Chief of Cincinnati. His report's expected to be completed in about a month, but the Safer Grant's been discussed multiple times with him, and we've talked about it in our meetings. The deadline for filing for that is May 15th, which is in 17, 18 days. Myself, President Frank Hauser, Mayor Reeser, Service Director Wagner, Acting Chief Schwimley, Law Director Ratliff, we've all met a few times and discussed our plan on exiting the ambulance district and going on our own. Optimal manning to staff a fire engine and two ambulances would be seven on duty at a time, but we know that number is unrealistic and out of reach financially for us. In talking with Mr. Kramer, he agrees that with our run volume and community size, that six on duty at a time would suffice. So, when you hire a firefighter, they work every third day. So every three guys that you hire equals one more person on shift at a time. So hiring six new firefighters would give you two more guys on duty today and take your minimum manning from four to six. The Safer Grant, like I said, pays 75% of the new firefighter salaries on years one and two, while 35% is paid on year three. Like I said, it begins in July, and you have 180 days, so they would have to be on your payroll by December 28th. So again, this is something, if we look at, it would not put any strain on this year's budget. And I know Joyce mentioned that next year's budget could be in the tanks as well. But Mark, to your question on the chart there, when you look at the salaries, our cost, if we hired six firefighters, would be 135,000 a year for the first two years, 351,000 for the third year, and then when we're on our own on year four, 540,000 to add those six new people. We anticipate bringing in $350,000 a year in the EMS billing. Our current ambulance district subsidy this year is 100,000. Next year, it goes up to 120,000. After that, we don't know what it is, because the contract's up for rebid. But President Frank Hauser and I have sat through a few meetings with the, in the ambulance board, where they've admitted, the ownership of the companies admitted that if they do bid on it again, they're looking at potentially at least doubling. So that's where you see my figure of 120 to 250. That's, you know, if they didn't double it, or if they did double it, is where that's at. But they've come out and said they anticipate at least double. The cost to pay for your ambulance and various supplies was estimated at around 40,000 a year. So when you look at all that together, on year one, you know, what we would spend for the six new firefighters, and we would still have to pay our subsidy on the last year of the contract, according to Mr. Ratliff, and then the ambulance and supplies, we're still coming up $55,000 ahead. If we do nothing, you know, we would be coming out $120,000 short by having to pay the subsidy. So that's where that difference is. On year two, and this is where my figures, if the subsidy were to stay the same, which I highly doubt, we would still be $295,000 to $425,000 would be our cost. Or, I'm sorry, year two subsidy, we're saving that. So we would be ahead anywhere's between 295 and 425,000 if we had to pay a subsidy. When you look at year three, our cost goes up to 351 on those salaries, still bringing in 350 on the billing. Subsidy, again, is a crapshoot at this time, but looking like we would be ahead anywhere's between 79 and 290,000. When you get to year four, when we're all on our own, that grant is over, based on what we would be paying with the subsidy, we could be anywhere from 20,000 ahead to 110,000 in the hole. So having that worst-case scenario, it looks like having to figure out where to get an extra $110,000 from the budget four years down the road.
And this is factored in with the subsidy potentially doubling, right?
Yes, sir.
And you, so, and there's actually been talks in the central joint ambulance meetings where they think there's a possibility it might triple. So that would, if the subsidy tripled, that would make, it would make even more sense for the city to pursue doing their own. And honestly, with COVID, I, this COVID thing's going to be around in a year from now, and I don't, I don't think that COVID is going to make the subsidy be less. If anything, it's going to make the subsidy be more.
Well, they've admittedly not been transporting near as many patients, and that's, when they're allowed to do their private transports, that's where they're making up some of their money. That's why the contract is structured the way it is, where it says two ambulances to sit and wait on 911 calls, and the third, they can use for anything they want, you know, to take somebody from the nursing home to the doctor's appointment, those types of things. That's where they're making, you know, some money to offset what the cost of the subsidy is. And a lot of that has stopped, not just because of the COVID, but also Avita is doing more and more here locally where they're not sending people out like they used two years ago.
I have a question.
So, 2022 would be the first year of an unknown anticipated subsidy increase, right?
Yeah, this current contract expires October 31st of 2021. So November 1 is when we would be into a new contract if we stayed with the ambulance district. Lisa, you had a question?
Yeah, will we be able to do, will we be expected to do private transports to actually increase some of the revenue?
So...
Through the fire department?
Yeah, in my experience with, you know, I worked for a department that did do the private runs, and we've talked with the leadership of the fire department here, and I believe, and they agree with me, it's something that if we did look at in the future, we would not want to do that initially. We'd want to get our, get our system running, figure it out. It's something that could be looked at again down the road. The problem with that is, is you have to call in more staff to take those extra runs. And so the money you're going to make, you're going to pay it right back out, having to have another ambulance and having to pay more, more staff salary. So it's really not a huge moneymaker for the fire department to do it.
How would those private transports be handled then if we're no longer in a contract with a ambulance?
Yeah, so, so around the state of Ohio, we're one of very few areas that still is covered by private ambulance. The majority of the state, and the majority of the country is covered by, by public EMS. There's still private companies, that's what they do. And, you know, having worked for one for several years, I can tell you, we made a lot of money on the transports. We didn't make money on the 911 calls. We lost them. We lost money on those. So, you know, Portsmouth would most likely stick around. There's other companies that could. Now, I know there were two companies here locally that have gone out of business in the last six months, but there's other companies around that could potentially, you know, the same companies that are taking these transports right now.
And what kind of situation would we be in if Portsmouth ambulance went out of, just went belly up tomorrow, said, "Sorry, we're leaving"?
Well, and that's, and I don't mean to speak disparagingly of them, because I think they've done a really good job, but that's always a fear when you have a company that their bottom line is important to them. If they're not making the money that they wanted to be making, and at some point, if I'm the owner of that company, I'm going to have to look at that and say, "Hey, we're, we're not doing it all. How much longer are we going to keep doing that?" So historically, if you look back, that happened here in Bussaras back in the late 60s. There was a private service that was providing the service, and they left without even telling anybody in the middle of the night, as I heard the story explained to me. And then the Bussaras Fire Department had to go to a local car dealership and bought a van, and their guys retrofitted it to make it into an ambulance. And that went on, I believe, what I heard was about six months, and then that's when Bird Ambulance, from our childhood, you may remember, Bird was out on the corner of Plymouth and Sherman, they came in after that whole thing happened. And that was well before my time. But here, hearing the stories, knowing, knowing that that's something that could happen, concerns me.
Yeah.
I've got a question. This William Kramer, when is his report due, the 15th?
No, his report, he said he would have to us probably within the next several weeks, three to four weeks, he told me. The Safer Grant, the deadline to apply for the Safer Grant is the 15th.
Okay.
Okay. Can I follow up next?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Kukka.
I contacted the law director's office today, and I asked him, I asked him that point about when was this report going to be due, and he said that they've been in contact with, with this man. And something about the preliminary report was going to be done towards the end of this week, if not next week, sometime in the middle of next week, the preliminary part would be done, and the formal report would be done within, you know, within the week after that. So, I mean, it's, it sounds like it's, according to Rob Ratliff, it's within, you know, two weeks, if not less.
That's good. Kurt and I both met with him last Friday, I think it was, and he had, he thought it would be another two to three weeks before his report was done. He didn't mention submitting a preliminary to us, so that's...
He said the draft towards the end of this week.
Okay.
A draft.
So, I mean, there's like, there's like some, I guess I need more communication of what exactly, when this guy's going to have it done.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm trying to do, you know, when they'd ask us to come up with a plan, you know, I want to get us talking about this. And if we do think that the Safer Grant's something that's going to benefit us this year, then I think, you know, we need to see if we can get the application done in time. If they want to wait until next year, that's fine, too. I think one of the things that's, you know, has frustrated me is that for the last 20 years, you know, when I was working in EMS here in town, there was multiple administrations that wanted to get into the ambulance business, but they never really took it very far. They didn't get a plan. And I think we're farther along now than we've ever been. And if we stop then, you know, we're going to be right where we're at and into another three-year contract with a private provider at a cost that we have no idea what it's going to be.
Okay. I got another follow-up.
Yes, sir.
I had, I had asked Rob today when our contract was going to be up. He gave me the November of 2021 is when the contract ends.
October 31st of 2021, yes.
Okay, so then, then he went on to explain to me, he says that, that we have to provide notice to the ambulance company by January 1st of 2021, what we're doing. Otherwise, we can't leave, we can't leave the joint ambulance until January 1st of 2022. So actually, actually, and, and in fact, and we were, we would actually be all the way up until January 1st of 2022.
Well, no, a little bit, how this works is, if we were not to give them notice until during calendar year 21, then it takes you up to January of '22. But this current contract ends, and if we're still part of that district, the district can put out for bid and award a contract again, and we're stuck with them. That was the point that he had made to us, was if we know that we're going to leave this, we have to do it before the end of this calendar.
Here, here's the other thing. If you're in that ambulance district, and they decide they're going to put a tax levy on the ballot, you're stuck. You can't get out. So...
They have discussed doing.
That, that right there is what I think is the, they could lock us in essentially. If we stick around too much longer, they could lock us in, and then we're in for three more years.
Yeah, but I have the understanding, I have the understanding that in my notes that I had read from you, that you guys were talking about putting a property tax on because we might need it. So what's the difference?
The thing is, if the ambulance district is going to put a property tax on, they're going to put a property tax on so that a private EMS company will be providing that service. If the citizens of Bussaras are paying a property tax, they might as well be paying it to go to the fire department. Because once we're paying the property tax to them, we, you can't decide that, hey, we're just going to let the fire department do it next year, because their property tax will be on the ballot for X number of years, and it might not even have an expiration. It could be one of perpetual property taxes. So...
I don't, I don't believe that. I really don't. I mean, there's never an open end on anything like that that I know of. Even school, even schools have a...
Our income tax, we got 1.5% income taxes in Bussaras that do not expire.
Yeah, well, that's the way it was set up. That wasn't how it was, I mean, that wasn't sprung on anybody.
Well, Bruce, to that point, you know, Kurt and I have sat through a couple of ambulance board meetings, and they have discussed, you know, that they feel they're probably going to need to put a levy on the ballot for the district-wide. And that's what concerns Kurt and myself, that, you know, if they put that on the ballot and it passes, then we're in for the indefinite time, and we're stuck paying that. And I think the point he was trying to make that I agree with is, as a property owner, you know, would you rather pay tax that's going to go to the ambulance district, who's going to pay a private company to bill you and profit from your runs? Or the alternative, if we do it ourselves, the discussion was, we may have to look at a property tax, depending on how it shakes out after that fourth year. So that, I guess, the difference is.
You know, and I, and I have a real problem with property taxes. Why is it that, why is it always a property tax? Why isn't it an income tax?
Well, it could be, and nobody's decided that, but I know we can't do sales tax. We're maxed out in the county on sales tax. If this is something, and again, not asking for decision tonight, trying to start getting a discussion made, but if we, you know, if this is something we want to do, and we wanted to at least apply for that grant, if we did both of these grants that I'm mentioning, we would save $999,000 in the firefighter salaries on years one, two, and three, and somewhere between 70 and 100,000 in the cost of a new ambulance. So we're looking at savings of potentially $1.1 million if we choose to go that route to do it ourselves. We're going to save, you know, a little over a million dollars of money that we would be spending anyway.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes?
Can I give some input here on the Safer Grant, first of all?
Yeah, go ahead. Mike Hasinger?
When you do the Safer Grant, it takes a period of time to put the grant together. There's a lot of narratives that have to be written. When we did it before, got it, we shipped it off to Washington DC, the people we knew in Washington DC, the IFF, they review it. They actually have the reviewers who award these grants review it. They send it back. We did that two, three different times to change the language. So the language was what we needed. And our grant we got last time was in the first group of grants administered, given to fire departments across the US. We were in the first group. So you can't just, on Tuesday, decide you're going to apply for a grant on Friday. It's going to take some preparation to get this done. So you can't wait too long. The other thing, on a property tax, anybody can put a property tax on, that doesn't mean it's going to pass. So if it fails, the city's still on the hook to find the money. How are you going to find the money to pay a huge subsidy increase? You're going to lay off firemen, you're going to lay off policemen? And that's something, I seen a, a letter from Tom Walker today, that's something they're not thinking of. If the city gets stuck paying a huge subsidy, where's the city going to come from to get that money to pay that huge subsidy if a property tax goes through? I know I own a property on Linwood, and I won't support a property tax, because Mark McKeever was right. It should have been renewed every five years because the city has mismanaged that safety forces tax. The fire department has three less people now than when it was passed. And we would have, we would have pushed for that to have been voted down. Didn't you want it to have to be renewed every five years, Mark? Remember back then?
I, I was, I ran because I'm against a permanent tax on anything. I believe all taxes should be renewable. That's why I ran, because I don't agree with permanent tax. I voted for it when it first came up, and it got voted down, and it, I voted against it when it became a permanent tax. Now, Joyce can correct me if I'm wrong, this money isn't being misspent. It is being spent in the safety forces, which is police and fire. Now, I'm not telling, I don't know from the first year on, I don't know who got, I don't have record in front of me. I don't know what department got what amount of money. Now, I know that we use a lot to upgrade our police department at first, because they were in, driving 20-year-old vehicles were beyond care. Now, I, like I said, I don't remember, and I don't have the facts and figures on how much went to the fire department and how much went to the police department. I don't have that. I, I don't know, and I, and Joyce can correct me if I'm wrong, but that money is being spent, and it can be spent in either department, but I don't know how it was done. You'd have Jeff Wagner and Joyce and Jeff Reeser would have to explain how it was spent, because I don't have it in front of me. I, and they may not have it right in front of them either, because it's been five years now, I believe, somewhere around there. Anyhow, I, I don't believe they misspent it. It's just not going where you're three people short in the fire department. And I, I, we need to make sure we are fully staffed. You know, we can't fight a fire with one fireman on a truck. And if somebody's out on an ambulance, you know, you know, a house is burning, it, it doubles every, what, the size of fire doubles every so many minutes. So you don't have time. A size of fire doubles every so many minutes. So you don't have time. Um, you know, i- i- this is complicated. We gotta find a way to come up with the money. We gotta find a way to come to an agreement to work with this, and, you know, I, I, I'm not against this. I don't know if we got enough time to get this through. And, and I mean, yeah, there's a lot of questions I have. I'm, I'm.
Hey, can I make a comment, Kevin?
Yeah, real quick though, Kurt, um, I have two things real quick, and then I'll get to you. The, the, the point that I wanted to make, that when you look at year four, the worst-case scenario, you know, is, is this could cost us a hundred and ten thousand dollars in, going in the hole compared to what, you know, it was with the subsidy not being raised. If they, if they double that subsidy like they're anticipating on the third, you know, of, of year four of, of this plan, which would be actually two ambulance district contact, contracts later, you can imagine it's probably gonna be at least a quarter of a million dollars is gonna be our subsidy. So when I look at it that way, I'm thinking, well, if we, if we can do it ourselves and, and have to figure out the hundred and ten thousand dollars, that's a heck of a lot better than us trying to figure out where we're gonna come up with a quarter of a million dollars or more. And then the other thing real quick was I just noticed there was a question in chat from Jacqueline Keegan, and, uh, her question was, do we currently have an emergency fund set up for safety levy, emergency funds? So as an example, setback ten percent every year from what we collect through the safety services levy. And the answer to that is not at this time, but it's something that several of us have been talking about, and I think we're gonna be exploring that to see if there's a chance to, to do that in the future, if that answers your question. Kurt, go ahead.
Okay, when we, actually, it was a prior council looked at doing the EMS there two years ago, and Kevin wrote his report, was it twenty-eighteen? Kevin?
Uh, yeah, twenty, twenty eighteen, I believe.
It, it, what it came down to is if, we would need six firemen to do it, six more firemen, and it was, it was gonna be somewhere between five hundred and six hundred thousand in the budget, closer to six hundred thousand to hire those six firemen. And we knew we'd get about three hundred thousand off the EMS billing side, just because of what Galleon's seeing on their EMS billing. And we couldn't find, we couldn't find the three hundred thousand. That's, that's the issue. We couldn't find the three hundred thousand. So with Portsmouth at the time saying, or with a, with a ambulance subsidy of a hundred thousand, you know, it looks cheaper to pay for the hundred thousand subsidy than come up with three hundred thousand. What this safer grant will do for us today is basically eliminate the city's upfront costs for the next three years of having to find that three hundred thousand dollars. From what I've seen on these charts and the past study, we, we have no risk for the first three years at doing this, by taking this grant. Now, at the end of the three years, we will know what, because we will have done the EMS, we will have billed for a couple of years, we'll know how much money we're bringing in. And actually, the worst, there's actually two scenarios I see here with this, this grant over the next three years. We're either gonna come out several hundred thousand dollars ahead for the first three years, or we're gonna break even. Worst-case scenario, we break even. If at the end of the three years, we, we know what our costs are gonna be, we'll know then if we can continue on and break even without having to have a property tax. But if not, we will have solid firm numbers showing us what that property tax would need to be. And we had that graph from the one council meeting a couple of months ago where we were looking at the property taxes, and a three hundred thousand dollar property tax for somebody's house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars, it, it was gonna be like fifty dollars a year. So it's, it's not that much that it's, I, I would not think of it as a huge tax increase. I would call it a little, small payment for an EMS service that you might have to use someday, that you're not paying for now. We, we're not charging any tax right now for EMS service, other than what indirectly gets paid is the subsidy, which is currently a hundred and twenty thousand or so, and, but see, that's the other thing. I, I, I think the subsidy's gonna triple. This doubling, it might have doubled before COVID, but after COVID, I'm pretty much certain that you're gonna be looking more towards a tripling here, which is gonna skew these numbers even more in favor of applying for this grant.
Yeah, here, what we're paying Kurt right now in this current year is one hundred and nine thousand three eighty-five for a subsidy. Next year, it goes up to one hundred and twenty-one thousand three forty-four for our portion.
Where does this leave the townships and how receptive are they to us pulling out of that?
So, that's a good question, and I know Bruce had brought that up to me the other day, and that's something we've talked about in the past. Um, and really, when you look at the, the map of the current district, excuse me, we wouldn't be the best suited to serve the entire district, but a portion of the district. If you just look at the, the four townships that are contiguous right, around the city of Bucyrus, and then I throw Dallas Township into that as well, um, being down there. W- when you add those five townships together, my personal feeling, you know, because those people that live there do come into town to work here, and while, while they're not residents, that they are still people that contribute to our, our town, I would offer to them that we would do it for the cost that they're paying on their third year of their subsidy, um, as a starting point. Now that, we could, we could, and that's something that the administration could work on later. They could negotiate other prices with them. Uh, but, you know, when you, when you offer to do it for them, run volume is what I want to talk about then. When you look at their run volume, um, I'm gonna give you the twenty seventeen numbers for the year. Bucyrus Township had forty-three runs for the year, that's three point five runs a month. Holmes Township had fifty-seven for the year, that's four point seven five a month. Liberty had seventy for the year, which is five point eight runs per month. Whitestone had two hundred and one, which is sixteen point seven five runs per month, and Dallas had twenty for the year, which is one point six runs per month. Now, I would propose if we did something like this, Whitestone Township's best served partially by us and partially by the city of Galleon. So when you take part of those out of there, you're looking at, you know, not even fifteen extra runs per month, uh, that we could, whatever dollar amount we figure out. Uh, and, and so to answer that question, now, your other part of the question, at least, was how receptive would they be? Number one, I think they kind of know that we're, we're leaving, because this has been talked about darn near every time the contract comes up for renewal for the last twenty years. They want an answer, so they know how to proceed. There, you know, there was talk, when we talked about this prior, uh, two years ago, they discussed forming a new district without us, which I think is what their plan's gonna be to do, or just continue with the same structure without us, one of, one, one way or the other, where they're gonna have to ask for a, a property tax for their residents to be able to pay. Now, I, I see their costs going up astronomically because we in the district have, uh, I had the figure somewhere, I don't have it right in front of me, so I'm gonna paraphrase what I think ballparked there. We pay like forty-some percent of the overall subsidy, but our run volume accounts for seventy-some percent. So when you take the seventy percent of the runs that are going on out of the equation, you know, there's not as much money coming in for, for the private company, so that they're gonna most likely bill the townships even more money. So I think, you know, and, and some of them, you know, I know one of the townships, uh, directly abuts to the city, has just recently purchased an ambulance, so they're looking at plans on, on how to do this themselves, and I think they're in the same boat we are. We're all trying to figure out what our roles are gonna be, how we're gonna work together with each other, what we're gonna be able to do for each other. And, and maybe they just say, hey, we're gonna start this on our own, and they realize, okay, we don't have enough people. They're not answering our calls, so we might, you know, tell the city, no, we don't want your help right now, but they might come back to us later. And I think we just need to, you know, maintain a fluid attitude about that and be willing to help them if they need it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I got a little more to add on that, Kevin, about what you said. Some of the townships, they, they did purchase their own ambulances and, because they, they see the writing on the wall. They, they've kind of known for a while this might be coming, so they're, they're positioning themselves so that they have coverage if the district disbanded, but, um, no, nothing's, as far as how they're gonna proceed is in stone, but some of the ideas that I heard some of them throw out there were they would possibly try to contract with a private provider for at least having just, just the one truck. Cause, and then they might try to supplement that with some of these ambulances that they have bought themselves. Like, for example, they might only have a truck from the daytime hours from the private provider from like seven AM to seven PM. And then they would try to do the other hours of the day with their volunteer fire, because they got volunteer fire that got medical, medical training, that could run those ambulances. But those people work during the day, or most people work during the day. So they were trying to look at their volunteer departments that might be short-staffed during the day. Well, maybe we could just pay the private provider during the day hours. So they, they've got ideas. They've, they've got things like that that they're talking about, and that would help keep their subsidy down if they were still contracted with a private provider.
Yeah, and they're, they're doing the same thing that we're doing. They're kind of working under two sets of plans. Well, what do we do with this, or what do we do with that? And I think, you know, they want to know what we're doing, and, and I think we owe it to them to let them know what we're doing as soon as we can figure that out. You know, whether that's today, whether that's next week, whether that's next month. When we get this figured out, you know, I think we owe it to them to, to figure it out as soon as we can to let them know what we're doing.
So before COVID hit, they were wanting to know here by like.
By now.
By now. They, they were wanting to know, the last ambulance board meeting we had, I think, was February, was it February? They were wanting to know two, two meetings from then if we were gonna be in or out. So that's, that puts you at April, May, which we're already here now.
Yeah.
Hey Kevin, I got a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just a couple of things there, reference to the levy, I know they had spoke about it earlier there. You know, we're two police officers down with one officer that we have being paid, part of it, his wages paid by the school for a school resource officer. So I know the levy money only goes so far, and we had to go out to the school just to get another officer, but it still leaves us two down. Just wanted to throw that out.
Are the school officers not working right now?
No, he's working.
But the school's not paying for it anymore.
I don't know how they do that, because I think they, you have to ask Joyce on how he actually gets paid and what they do with that money, because they pay to the general fund, and then his wages are, are taken out of there, because they pay like half of his wages or something like that. Then the other thing I wanted to throw in there, you said earlier, reference to, you know, private is where you make the money on the ambulances, and the nine-one-one, not as much.
Correct.
Um, and I see on your EMS billing that you have the three hundred and fifty thousand. Do you have documentation someplace through the other ambulances on how their billing is going out? Is what, what is being billed to Bucyrus? And I'm just kind of curious on those figures there, on where we're gonna come up with three hundred and fifty thousand. And then how is the city, um, getting with someone that's going to be billing to make sure that they're collecting these funds? Um, because that's not something that the police department does, is go out there and collect, you know, these fees for anybody.
Right. We're already established with a billing company for the EMS runs that we do take, and I cannot tell you the exact percentage. I want to say it's somewhere between three and five percent is what they keep for everything they collect. Um, so the figures that I'm using, uh, come from a few different places. From my time working for the private companies, I've got some data, uh, that I'm looking at. Um, in twenty fourteen, the dollar amount that was collected by the private service that was here was four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. In twenty thirteen, uh, four hundred and four thousand five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-four cents. So we know that payment structure has changed a little since then. Um, we also are using data that was, uh, that we get from Galleon, uh, with similar run volumes. You know, we know what our run volume is. Uh, part of the contract, the current company is not obligated to tell us how much they're, they're recovering in billing. Uh, so I'm, I'm going off of two things really, my previous experience of the other companies that I've worked for, and then what we're seeing other municipalities in this area, uh, with similar run volumes. I also, sorry, I keep leaning over here, I also have, if I could find it here real quick. Um, in Crawford County, the last year that I had this from, again, this is, this is a couple of years old worth of data, but of all the billing sources, fifty point three percent was Medicare, sixteen point six percent Medicaid, eighteen point four percent commercial insurance, seven point four percent was facility liability, meaning like if Heartland or Aldercare sent somebody out, they paid. That has since been ruled illegal, so that number is, is gonna go away, and some of that money will go over to the Medicare Medicaid side, and then seven point three percent is private pay. Now, with the municipality doing the nine-one-one service, because we would be paying for at least a portion of this out of tax revenue, um, we have to legally do what's called soft billing, where they'll accept your insurance company's payment, uh, but they would not go after you through collections for the remainder if you lived in the city limits. Now, if you lived in Columbus and you're driving on your way to Cedar Point and you had a car crash, uh, they would take your insurance payment, and they would have the ability, if they wanted to, to come after you, um, for the remainder that, that your insurance company didn't pay. Uh, so I don't know if that somewhat answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify there, because it sounded like you, you made more money private versus your nine-one-one runs.
You do, so the, the, the three fifty I'm looking at is, is again what we're anticipating, and actually, the numbers we've gone through, a couple of people have told me my figures are a little low, but I'd rather them be a little low. Um, some people said they think we would be closer to three seventy-five. Uh, I, I think the three fifty's a, a, a fair number to, to work with for math-wise, uh, is what we would bring in for the, you know, our portion of the nine-one-one runs. But, you know, if, if, if you're being transported by ambulance from, you know, the intersection of the square up to the hospital, you know, you may, as the ambulance company, bill out eight hundred dollars for that and accept, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars from the insurance company, and that's it. Um, if you are taken from Bucyrus Hospital down to Riverside Hospital per se, where they get you is on the mileage. If you're, and this is, again, these are my, my knowledge of my numbers from when I worked at LifeStar, but we were charging back then like ten dollars and fifty-three cents a mile on top of the base rate for paramedic service. I think the base rate then was like five or six hundred dollars, plus that ten dollars and fifty-three cents per mile on top of it. So that's where that private transport, why they make so much more money. And that's why these private companies would much rather be doing the private runs than the nine-one-one runs.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Hey Kevin.
Yeah, is that Mike? Go ahead, Mike.
Point of clarification, I know they're down two from the billet. Fire department is down ten employees from the billet. Three from when the safety back forces tax was passed. Since we have some police officers listening in, I would like them to tell us how many additional employees they have from when the safety forces tax was passed, because the fire department is down three.
The one thing though, Mike, and I, I appreciate your question, but I don't want this to turn into a fight between any two groups because we're trying to look to solve the problems, and if the problem.
I, I agree, Kevin. I agree.
Can I finish my statement, and then I'll let you speak? I, I, rather than pointing fingers and trying to say, well, you got this and I got that, we're trying to solve a problem here. Uh, and if that problem, solving that problem includes getting the fire department up to staff and handling our EMS, and if it, if it involves getting our police department, you know, any more staffing, I want to tackle all those problems and make it all square. You know, that's, I want to look forward is where I'm at, and I, I appreciate your, your statement. I'll let you, let you ask the question, but I want to make sure that, you know, I go on record saying that I want to solve the problems for all of our departments going forward, not looking at what we've done going backwards.
And, and I agree with you, but that first year, we knew they were hurting for equipment, and we completely supported. Their, their equipment was in shambles at the PD, and we knew it, and that's why nobody said anything that first year. And I guess we're just disappointed because the professional courtesy, we never spoke against them getting equipment. We never, we never did that, and I guess professional courtesy sort of hurt by what's going on here tonight. And, you know, let's all move forward together. I agree with you, Kevin.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so we've got a lot of stuff to consider. And while none of it needs decided today, we need to start figuring out what we're doing. You know, like I said, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. When the COVID stuff hit, the administration asked the unions and asked us as council to come up with a plan. And I want to get, and we, we, we discussed some things in the ad hoc committee, some things that was going to be referred on to us to, to deal with here in health and safety as they deal with police and fire. But you know, we need to make a decision at some point about what we're gonna do. Uh, I think if, if you can look at the, the math, it makes logical sense that we want to do this ourselves and not stick into the, the private sector where we have no idea what the future holds and, and what kind of dollar amount we're going to be paying. And Bruce, you're right. I want to see what Mr. Kramer's report says. Now I know Kurt and I and several other people have met with him. And he's shared a lot of what he's going to report to us, but you're right. We, we need to see what he has to say. Um, you know, we talked in the ad hoc committee about, you know, trying to make sure that we can have an active civil service list for police and fire at all times. I still am hugely in favor of that. I think that's the right and responsible thing to do for many reasons. Uh, we have to talk about the safer grant, knowing that this year's safer grant has a deadline of May fifteenth. And yeah, if we miss that deadline this year, are we going to try for it next year? Probably. But the problem I have with waiting another year is we keep waiting another year and we've kicked the can down the road for so many years. If, if we're going to want to try to take this on and Mr. Kramer did bring up a point in one of our teleconferences that um, the question was asked, well, do we do, how do we try to take this up to that November first date and flip that light switch and go from them to us? And he said, I wouldn't wait then. I, you know, as soon as you're able to get your system in place, I'd start doing it when you can, not when your deadline is. It's like a kid that has a, a homework assignment that's due at eleven fifty nine PM. I can tell you, well, I was going to college, I turned that stuff in at eleven fifty seven. Uh, and, and I, I want to make sure that we've got our plan in place in, in adequate time to do things. So again, the safer grant, that's one of the reasons that, that we wanted to meet today rather than wait till next week's meeting, just to see if this is something we want to look at. Um, and then this, the last being the USDA grant. Again, not being with a deadline on that one, but knowing that both for the COVID response for the short term, it has a little bit of a help to us. But going long-term, we know we're going to need uh one and potentially two at some point, new ambulances. Uh, it's, it's a way to get some free money that can probably occur later, just as well as it can now. So uh a- any committee members have any questions, statements or otherwise?
I do.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Uh, since you guys have such, apparently you are uh almost as considered an equal in uh, in the discussion with this man from Cincinnati. Then is there a way that you can call him tomorrow and get factual information from him? When he's going to have numbers that he can provide everyone instead of, that way it's not last minute. Right now you were projecting a month out, Rob saying a week and a half to two weeks. You know, I have no factual information in front of me.
I will absolutely answer that question for you tomorrow morning.
And, and then the other part of it is, is I've been on council and it's a matter of fact of procedural uh things. You can get on minutes on demand and go back to June fifth of two thousand twelve. And at that point in time, that's when we went ahead and uh, uh special finance committee, um meeting was held then that uh always in the past, I always thought that the fire department, they didn't need city council's blessing to do anything. I mean, they've always in the past, I thought they applied for grants because as the minutes, I looked up even in the paper minutes that I have and, and back in two thousand twelve, in June of two thousand twelve, uh Wagner and it was, it was uh, oh, it was Roger Moore at the time, you know, we're, we as council, we're all thanking the fire department for going ahead and applying for the grant. Uh, and then, then when city council comes into play, that's when we authorized the service director to proceed to go forward. But as far as us mandating it, I always thought that the, the, the fire department and the police department always had free rein on applying for these grants. I mean, they wouldn't, you know, if the fire department didn't take the initiative to do all this, we would probably be having horse and buggy yet.
It's my understanding and Mr. Rapp, if, if you're on and able to elaborate and correct me if I'm wrong at all, it's my understanding that both of these grants require some signatures or something from the administration. And I don't know the exact wording of that, but to guarantee that we've got the ability to pay our share or something of that nature. I don't know if he's still, oh, there he is.
I, I don't know what the exact requirements from the uh, from the gr- this particular grant are. Often they have a repayment certification that the auditor has to sign that we have the funds that we can afford it. Or that we will uh do the staffing or those sorts of things. But those are ju- those are generally certifications on the front end for applying for them. Uh, after the fact, if the grants are awarded, then the administration does have to come to you and get the specific staffing and the appropriations and everything done in the budget. But we uh, it's, it's fairly frequent for both police and fire and even the administration to be applying for grants kind of outside of the um, outside of this, the council legislative process. They're always looking for it. So we're, you know, we get a lot of small things frequently, not frequently enough, but you know, frequently air tanks, masks, uh vests. I know the police got a vest not too long ago. So those things are going on in, in, in the background all the time.
Okay. Well, I know, you know, talking about Bruce, I think one of the things here is we would be as a city saying, well, if we applied for the safer grant and got it, we'd be spending a hundred and thirty five, a hundred and thirty five and three hundred and fifty one thousand. We would have to guarantee, I guess, that we've got that, that money or the willingness to spend that money is probably why it needs something outside of the fire department.
Okay. Well, I, I, I just, I just go on, on the history that is in front of me.
When you, when you referenced that June fifth, was that for the safer grant back then?
Yes, sir. I could read you, I could read you the minutes if you'd like.
If there's any pertinent part of it, feel free. I don't have it in front of me.
Well, it, it said that uh, city council had a special finance committee meeting on Monday, June fourth, two thousand twelve. Uh, the members were Walker, SAC and Chairman Steve Pfeifer. Uh, said that after some explanation about the safer grant from Auditor Joyce Schiffer, a motion was made by Walker, seconded by SAC to authorize the service director to enter into a contract to establish a fund and appropriate a hundred and sixty eight thousand. And uh, it goes on to say the total grant amount is for six hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars, which will cover the salary benefits for four firefighters for two years with the city to cover the third year. And anything over the six hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars in the two-year period, a hundred percent. And then it goes on to say that uh, you know, the, the committee thanks the fire department for going out and seeking this grant. You know, they're the ones that sought the grant. And then in the service director's report, uh, he, he, he makes mention of it too, that uh, and that he was very thankful that the firemen, uh, as, as you many, as many know, we were fortunate enough to receive the safer grant for the city's fire department. We have sent letters to recall three of our firefighters back to work that were laid off last October. This is a, this is a Band-Aid for the fire department, according to Mr. Wagner. We will need to pass the city's proposed levy in order to maintain staffing levels in our safety forces. We would like to thank the local firefighters for their hard work in applying for and receiving this grant. So the, the procedural part is what, you know, is the, was the part that I, I, it's basically referenced that, you know, nobody, I, I don't understand that. I don't, I don't believe that they need anybody's, I mean, what I'm getting at, they don't need our blessing. I don't think they need the mayor's blessing or Mr. Wagner's blessing, apparently according to this.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like. Now in my discussions with the uh, acting fire chief, he uh, he did tell me that um, he does have to have the administration's signature to apply.
Hmm. Yeah. Mister, Mister Moore was must apparent, well, Mister Moore was the mayor at that point in time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Uh, back when this was applied for uh originally, back in two thousand.
Twelve, you mean?
Twelve. That safer grant covered a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And it also, if we hadn't spent all the money within the original timeframe, it was extended. And we did have some delays on hiring and, and I mean, we brought back our, our laid off firefighters, but one had uh gotten a, a job elsewhere. And so then we had to hire someone else from outside. But uh, unfortunately, uh, before that grant ran out, the safety forces levy passed, so we were able to maintain those firefighters.
Yeah.
This grant is, is different. It's only paying seventy five percent. I'm not sure about the numbers as far as what six firefighters, you've got six firefighters included in these numbers you've got here?
Yes.
And, and when you get to year four for five hundred and forty thousand, that's approximately ninety thousand per firefighter. Um, it could be significantly more by twenty twenty four, not knowing what health insurance and benefits and raises and, and what police and fire pension may do. We currently pay twenty four percent uh, city share on firefighters into police and fire pension. So I'm, you know, I'm a little iffy on that. Uh, the EMS billing, I guess you know more about that than, than I do. Uh, whether that's high or low, I'm not so sure about the the savings on the subsidy. I'm you, you're assuming uh, these savings are going to be at two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, ambulance and supplies, I can't imagine that those are going to stay constant. The way things are going, you know, with COVID and everything else, I think supplies are going to go up and if this is a locked in uh, payment on ambulance that, whatever, I, I really don't know on that. Um, so I'm, I'm really not sure that we're actually going to see savings, I, I guess. I, I would really like to see Mr. Kramer's report and, and I know that he's going to have numbers to assume. I, I also know that uh, uh, the acting chief is working on the safer grant, getting all the everything together so that we would be prepared to pull the trigger on that if, if need be by the deadline. He, he's not been told he can't do it. Uh, I mean, he said, you know, he's, he's been told, go ahead and get it ready. So I don't know. I, I just really would like before, and I know you're not making a decision tonight. Uh, but I really think we need to see what Mr. Kramer says before we try to pull the trigger on anything.
I don't disagree with you. I'm trying to get the conversation rolling. Um, and to your point about my numbers maybe not being right in a few years, you're probably right. Um, I don't know what percentage of increase to, to put on there. Because like you said, it is an unknown. I don't know what medical costs are going to do. Um, and so, and yeah, assuming the subsidy, we doubled it for these numbers because we were told that by the ownership of the current company. Um, case in point, this was the only company that, you know, there, at the time that we put out these requests for proposals, there were ninety, ninety-three or ninety-six licensed ambulance companies to do advanced life support in state of Ohio. We sent a RFP to all of them and I think it was ninety-six of them. We got one bid back and that was from Portsmouth Ambulance and they now, you know, halfway into their contract or not quite halfway, they've said they're, they're realizing they're not making as much money as they thought they were going to make and they're going to have to uh, and we asked them point blank, if you bid on this again, what, what do you anticipate a subs? And he said at least double.
What if nobody bids on it again? What's our plan if nobody bids on that contract again?
That's what I'm trying to make sure we understand that we don't have a plan right now. And I think it behooves us to, to have a plan ready before we get.
If, if nobody bids on that, we're, and we drag our feet, we're going to be looked at as all their, their counsel was not looking out for the citizens of Bucyrus and their long-term future. So. Well, Mr. President. It's almost like. Okay, let's, let's say we applied for the grant and we got it. Do we, can we give it back if we decide in two months, we don't, we decide we don't want to do it? Is that an option?
Joyce, do you have any information on that? I, I think.
Not really, but I, I could say that if we went through this process and we actually got awarded the grant and discovered that we, we just can't afford it. I mean, by, by July, we're going to have better numbers. Um, if we turn it down, it'll be very difficult to ever get another grant like that again.
Uh, that's my fear.
Yeah.
And we talked about that, I think with one of the other grants, an ODNR grant or something. Um, and it was the same, same thing that where if we were going to turn it down, I, I think that would have just looked poorly on us for, for future.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing factoring here, let's say we don't do it. And then two months from now, the private company decides they're going to fold up because COVID got too bad or something. Now we're in a situation where we do got to pay for all of this EMS out of our own pocket and we can't get the grant anymore because the deadline already passed. So it's, it, in my opinion, it's best to stay proactive here. All right. Give me the facts and figures.
Yep. I'll get you that answer tomorrow morning, Bruce, of when you can expect at least his preliminary report. Bruce, did you have any other questions or anything to add?
No, I just would like, I'd rather, I'd rather stay positive than being preached to. I, I, I don't like being preached to. I mean, what if and all this, then just give me the facts.
All right. Mark, anything from you?
I, I, I agree partly with Bruce that we just need the facts so we can back this up and move forward with what will work for us, that we can have a facts that Joyce can show us what we can or can't afford by the uh, current status of our income, which we are greatly hurting right now. Um, I, I believe we got to move forward. We can't wait and get stuck with the uh, um, decisions by the ambulance district with a fifteen to one vote against us and we get stuck with something that isn't going to work for us. Let alone like you stated, we only had one company bid and we could be stuck with nothing. And we got to be ready to move forward and take care of ourselves first. And then move on to possibly helping the adjoining townships, uh, the contiguous ones to uh, you know, them prevent this problem so that they're all protected also. I, 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 we gotta keep moving. We gotta move as fast as we can on the safer grant. You know, you know, it, I wish we would have got to, we could have moved bef- further on this sooner instead of being pushed against a uh, uh seventeen day time limit that um, may or may not work for us. And also we would have, if we would have done this earlier and applied for it, you know, without this uh, COVID nineteen, I think we could have possibly done it with our. With our incomes that we were doing, but. Now we're facing something different that we got to find a way to, uh, address the issue.
All right, Mr. Me, anything from you, questions or statements?
Well, it sounds like we got a plan, so we wait for the Kramer report and see what his numbers say.
All right, and I'll get you that, I'll get all of you guys that answer tomorrow morning. Um.
Make sure we all get it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anybody else have any questions or anything to add?
So is the grant filled out yet, ready to go or?
It's my understanding that both grants are ready to go, waiting on the administration's approval.
I got a question for the law director.
Still here? I think he's still here.
Yeah.
Yeah, can, can council pass a resolution? Telling the administration that they're going to submit that grant? By that deadline?
They have the authority, they have the authority to pass a resolution to recommend it.
That's not the question I asked, I said, can council pass a resolution? Telling the administration, not recommending, telling the administration they're going to apply for that grant.
That would be an ordinance, wouldn't be a resolution and. You could pass one, I think they would, uh, probably challenge whether it was valid, whether you had the authority to do it.
Well, it's my understanding the mayor has a veto power on ordinances and resolutions and council can override his veto with a five-member vote.
Yes.
So then the answer is yes, council can pass a resolution telling him he's going to apply to this grant.
Or, no. The, the, it's a two-part question, or the veto power is not the same as the authority. To direct an elected official in their duties. The administration has administrative function duties. That are separate and distinct from council, council's duties are limited to the legislative branch. Um, think of Congress passing a law that said the president had to. Had to do a certain thing, it's, there, there are separate branches of, of government. And in council's duties are relegated to the legislative functions, passing, passing laws and affecting.
That council, how is this not then council legislating something and then he's obligated to execute the legislation that council passes?
Because it goes to the administrative function of the, of the administrator, of the, of the executive branch. The executive branch has the ability.
Administration can pick and choose ordinances and resolutions that they enforce, then. Why, why is the veto power wrote in the Ohio revise code for ordinances passing and stuff?
Veto power is, is a separate, is a separate function, it's a checks and balances between the legislative and the executive branch.
So you're saying that beyond that veto power, the administration can still pick and choose stuff that they enforce and.
Uh, there, there's two parts to that question, one, there are things that, yes, in the executive branch or the. Or, or, or the executive branch has things that it can do and not do. The second thing is whether or not council has the authority to pass an ordinance that forces the, the executive branch. To take a specific action.
Can we as council? Can council? Get another attorney's opinion from outside legal counsel on this issue?
Yeah. Yeah, you can spend all the money you want on that.
We can pull it out of the contract line item for. Outside legal counsel that we already got in your budget, put it in council's budget for outside legal counsel.
Certainly.
All right, so any other questions or? Comments? All right, I'll get you guys that information on when we can have, expect to see Mr. Kramer's, at least his preliminary report. And, uh, maybe we'll know a little more, uh, we're already scheduled to meet next Thursday. Uh, on the seventh, so unless, uh, you know, when, when you get that information, if you guys feel the need to meet sooner. Say the word and, you know, it takes three of us to, to schedule another meeting sooner. Uh, I think most of our schedules are still kind of free for a while. Uh, but, uh, if we don't have the need to meet again sooner, then we can, uh, continue this discussion next Thursday on the seventh. So, uh. If nobody has the last chance here, if anybody has anything else to add. If not, the, uh, time is seven seventeen PM and we will adjourn the health and safety committee and I don't believe we have to have a finance committee since no action was taken in it.
That's correct.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.